I go start. Thank you, Kyle.
You're good to go. Recording's going.
Right. Good afternoon, everyone. It's April 24th, 2023. This is the MOA GBOS Quarterly Meeting with the revised agenda from 4/19/23. The Girdwood Board of Supervisors, its committees and subcommittees are subject to the Alaska Open Meetings Act as found in Alaska Statute 44.62.310 and Anchorage Municipal Code 1.25 Public Meetings. The Girdwood Board of Supervisors operates under the Girdwood Public Meeting Standards of Conduct. I'll call this meeting to order at 4:02 PM. I am Brianna Sullivan, Co-Chair, Parks and Recreation and Cemetery Supervisor, also in the room.
Mike Edgerton, Co-Chair, Land Use Supervisor.
And on line, Amanda.
Amanda Sassy, Public Safety.
Thank you. Jennifer.
Jennifer Wingard, Roads and Utilities.
And is Guy there?
I am Guy Wade, Fire Department.
Thank you, Guy. Are there any disclosures from the board? Seeing and hearing none. That is the end of our roll call. Could I ask for the attendees also here from the municipality? If you'd like to state your names.
Hello, this is Kent Colehazy, Acting Municipal Manager.
Thank you, Kent.
Good afternoon, everybody. This is Lance Wilber, the Director of Economic and Community Development.
Thank you, Lance.
Good afternoon. This is Dave Whitfield, current Planning Manager with the Planning Department.
Thank you, Dave.
Hey, good afternoon. This is Ryan Yell, Senior Planner with the current Planning Division of the Anchorage Planning Department.
Thank you, Ryan. Great, everyone. Thanks for being here. And announcements I'll go to next. The public is encouraged to ask questions and provide comment. Please raise your hand in wait to be acknowledged. To help discussion stay productive, please direct your comments to the board rather than other members of the public and keep your comments focused on the business under discussion. Please be respectful of everyone's opinion. Agenda. I entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
I will approve. I also will have an amendment afterwards.
Okay. Do we have a second for the agenda approval?
All second. This is Jennifer.
Thank you, Jennifer. And what is the amendment, Mike?
The issue about the formation of the Housing Economic Stability Committee, I think we have some question we need clarified, so we'll make that item four if possible.
Okay. Jennifer, would you be amendable to that? As being the second?
Sure.
Thank you, Jennifer. Any other comments on this? Otherwise, I'll go by assent. Are there any objections to the amended agenda? The agenda is amended and approved. We'll go to number one again, welcome. And if I skipped anyone for introductions, I apologize. We'll go to the Girdwood Housing Concerns and start with the introduction of formation of the Housing Economic Stability Committee of GBOS, Prop 7.
Can we move that? We're gonna have that discussion on writing force, so perhaps we can just focus on the first item.
First item, which is. Okay, yes, Girdwood Housing Concerns.
Can I speak to that very briefly?
Yes, please, Mike. Thank you.
I just wanted to acknowledge the the work that HLB has done and presented at the Assembly Enterprise Utilities Oversight Committee last week. And I wondered if it would be possible for Mr. Wilber to just give a very, very quick overview on the work that had been done for that, just for the rest of the board.
Yes, thank you, Mike. I'd be glad to do that.
Thank you.
As Mike was mentioning last Thursday, the Assembly's Enterprise and Utilities Committee had met. And we at HLB were there. I had Emma Gibbene and Jonathan Taylor join me from HLB staff. And the Assembly had asked for a analysis of land that would be HLB property, that would be developable, and identify some of the constraints for both housing and commercial. And so for the past previous eight weeks, we've been working with planning and the GIS folks, and we came prepared a report that provided sort of a summary of the potential development of HLB parcels in Girdwood. And Emma, working with HLB, we had two particular tasks. One of them was we narrowed down basically the 58 parcels that are HLB managed inside the Girdwood area and through a series of constraint analysis, whether it be wetlands or slope and zoning, wet avalanche zones, we had narrowed those down to 11 parcels and identified those parcels based on their size and came up with some estimations for what it would also take to bring utilities to those particular sites. So we presented that to the Assembly. We had not had a chance to present it to the Girdwood Board of Supervisors or others at the time we had presented. The material is available online, but I think what we can do is rather than you dig for it, we can send a direct link to the material that we provided. If you don't already have it through the Assembly site to Kyle, and then we'll make sure that you have it available. But it really is a summary of the HLB parcels, pretty much the 11 key parcels. So that was half of the assignment. The other half of the assignment was from the Assembly is they asked us to look at some financial mechanisms that could promote housing development inside the Girdwood area. So we had prepared a table that identified current funding mechanisms that are available inside the municipality currently. Some tax incentives that might be available. Previous state legislation kind of restricted those, but recently they might be available to Girdwood. Other things that we talked about that still need to be fleshed out are the opportunities or the possibilities for some type of an overlay district that might be available for Girdwood. It would be similar to that that is in downtown. And then there were some other ideas that were presented. I would say that the land use analysis, I would guess, is probably 80% to 90% complete. We asked the Assembly to give us there any comments on the first draft. And I think Chair Zalatell instructed the members of the Assembly to send their comments to us by May 5th or May 4th. The financial piece is gonna take a little bit more fleshing out with the CFO and others. So that's probably a little bit, that's gonna be a little longer in our end to complete. And we'll be working with not only our finance people, but I know that folks in Girdwood have had some ideas about how they might be interested in funding that. So that work is to be completed, but we're happy to share that work that we've done so far. And Mike, I appreciate you putting this one on the agenda, whoever did, and giving us a chance to share it. I was gonna bring that up as part of my presentation later, but if you have questions, I'd be happy to try to address those. I've also got Emma and Jonathan here. And if you want to have a separate conversation about the details of the report, we'd be happy to accommodate that at another time, so we don't consume this agenda. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Lance. Have follow-up, Mike?
Yeah, actually, thank you. Thank you for the last comment in particular. I was going to suggest we might want to have a separate discussion about the content of the memo and of the content of the report and what happens next, if you're amenable to that.
I am, yeah. I think if we could find some time to do that, we'd be happy to share.
Thank you.
Okay. So next, the item then is addressing the Girdwood Valley Service Area Questions posed in the letter to the Director Wilber that we sent and dated April 19th. Mr. Wilber, will you be able to speak to that?
I will. I think I can summarize some of these, and hopefully, I think the copy of the letter was in the board's packet. So if you had a chance to look at that, and I'll real briefly go through the questions. Sort of at the first bullet, it's really what is going on with the Holton Hills Agreement, as in it's still in force, and we have a couple of options here. What is HLB's intent for the Development Agreement? I mean, I would say in summary, right now, the MOA is still bound by the Development Agreement. And we're sort of simply waiting for the developer to indicate their intentions for it. So we are currently not seeking to terminate it. We're waiting to hear from the developer as to whether or not they would like to do that or some other process. So that's kind of the short answer of number of the first bullet. If you would like, I will just go through them, and then if you guys have questions after that, we can go from there. Would that be amendable?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, perfect. So I think the next one was previous sole source contracts that we have. So on that one, we have a little more than $163,000 that was allocated through two Assembly Actions. We've spent about $86,000 of the 163, so about half of it. And those, that was invoices paid for things like wetlands delineation, some engineering, geotechnical surveying, and then the efforts that we did to have the property plat- platted. So that is where we are on number two. And I think on number, the third bullet, the disposal was halted and the application for replating for the original five tracks. So our intention on that one is the plat has been approved, and we intend to, at least at this time, we intend to complete the replating, file it, and I think this will allow for some easier development when whatever future housing project comes forward. So we intend to file the plat that was available or that was approved by the Plating Board. Number, what's the next one down? If you could arrow down whoever's driving the screen. I can't see it. Oh, thank you. Was there a formal bifurcation of the RFP? Yes, it was into two or more projects. The, what we're looking for now is we have a version with one party signature. And I just haven't had a chance to find the one that had both parties on there. So when we find that, and unless the law department tells us there's a reason why we can't share that, we will certainly do that as well. But that's where that one is. Has there been any work on a development agreement with Alieska Village? I think right now, we have heard from Palmeroy. They reached out to us, and we're gonna want to work with them and our legal department on developing agreement. We don't have one. So that's kind of where we are right there. I think we'll recognize in the draft workload program that we also have some policies in there about how we advance and review the, any draft agreements that we have with the Commission, Heritage Land Bank Commission. So I think that answers that one. And then the last, what do we have here? Release any maximinimally? That's a nice one. That's a double word score in Scrabble. I like that. Let's see, the RFP responses, you know, I think we have provided that in the past. I think we've had that requested. We're happy to share all of that again. I'm not sure that we have anything else to be provided. So whoever asked the question, or maybe the board could give us a little guidance on that. We're happy to re-provide the material that we had had already been requested from the RFP response. So happy to share that again. But if there's something else that you're specifically, that might be available that hasn't been provided or you haven't received what's already been released, happy to share that as well. And then I think the last one we have is, notwithstanding HLB's plans for Holton Hills, we request HLC to terminate the agreement or remove uncertainty about it. I mean, I think that's similar to the first one. I mean, right now, we're not doing anything to change what may or may not happen with Holton Hills. Think it rests with CY Investments sort of on the next steps. The discretion is with them. And I can verify, but there may be, you know, there may be some in the agreement if the city was to terminate it. There may be some, you know, financial liability on our end, but I would suggest that right now it's really with CY Investments. They may come forward with a different proposal, something different that might meet, you know, something satisfactory to the folks, not only in Girdwood but to the developer. So that's where we are on that one. So that was pretty quick. Those were some really good questions. I appreciate the chance to respond to those. And I think what I can do is I will respond to them in writing. And once I hear back from a couple of these things, in that way, we have it clear. So I think if you have other questions, I'll pause right there.
Thank you, Lance. That was really great and thorough, and I appreciate you offering to write the responses just in case there's more formal writing that was missed. But I'll ask the board if there's any clarifying on all of those. So we have one with Mike here. Perhaps, go ahead.
Sorry. Just some quick follow-up, please. The, on the issue of the plating, I think you mentioned the replat itself. Is the section line easement separate or has that already been done? My understanding was that's a state action. It can take longer. The section line easement vacation already occurred.
Mike, I don't know. Maybe my friends in the Planning Department would know. Maybe I can maybe ask Dave Whitfield or Ryan Yell if they know. I don't.
Dave's hand is up. So go ahead, Dave.
Thanks, Lance. The process for vacating a section line easement is twofold, one with the state and one with the, and then the second with the municipality. I can't tell you the status of that process as of now. Brian, do you know if they've submitted an application? I don't believe they have, but I'll defer to him.
Yeah, thanks, Dave. So the only vacation that has occurred thus far to my knowledge is vacation of the municipal interest in that section line easement. The state, I'm not sure the status of where that application is at the state level, but the state is the, as Dave mentioned, the final approval for that vacation.
Thank you. Just to dot the i across the t, is the, can the plat be recorded if the section line vacation hasn't been completed? Or is that gonna hold it up?
Only if they withdraw their request to vacate the section line easement. And I don't know.
Okay, so the plat can't be recorded until that process is finished. Thank you. The, my second comment was on the question about Alieska Village Development Agreement. I think Mr. Wilber said something about following the HLB Advisory Commission process or following some additional process, and I didn't quite catch what you said there. I wondered if you could just repeat that or say a little bit more.
Yeah, thank you, Mike. So one of the things that the draft 2023 Annual Work Program, and I was hoping I could get a chance to let the board know where we are on that at the end of the agenda. But one of the things that we had talked to the board about that staff had proposed is inside the work program in the past, and this one, we have a draft policy in the work program that would suggest that when we have future development agreements, that we engage the commission through that process in the review of it. And that's what I had mentioned, because right now there is no policy that requires us to do it. So we had some suggested language that we ran by the commission that we would then put out for public review when we're ready to release the document. So and hopefully I can talk about that here at the end, Mike.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate that. And my last question was regarding the unredacted copy of the original RFP. I don't think we've, I don't think we as a public have seen anything which unredacted. I think there was the original redaction at the very beginning of the process, and I haven't seen anything less than that. So if you could, if you have released it to under a records request or something, it would be great if you could do that publicly. Specifically, there is a map in there which showed the areas of general of interest from both parties, and that's, I've never seen a copy of that.
Okay, I mean, I, okay, let me see what we have. And if we have material that was redacted or unredacted, we'll find out what is available there. And I may, I'll also find out it, I mean, if there were, there was material inside the RFP process that related to the maps. So that should be available as well. But I'll tell you what, let me talk to my staff. I may want to just follow up with you to make sure that I understand, I can share with what we have and what we don't have, and if that's okay.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you, Lance. Emma's had her hand up. I didn't know if she was going to clarify something or put it back down. So Emma, if you have something.
I can offer a clarification about that. This is Emma Gibbene, Land Management Officer for Heritage Land Bank. A lot of the redactions in that, in the original proposal were redacted as a request from the people who submitted it. They had a, in the cover letter with their submission, it said, please redact, you know, A, B, and C. So a lot of those things weren't redacted necessarily by us. It was as a requirement of making it public. Does that help explain that? I'm not sure about the map specifically. I can look more into that. But just a lot of the financial information in the proposal was redacted because of that.
Yeah, thank you. I understand the, why the financial stuff would be, but things like the number of housing units, the rough time scale, and the map of general area was also redacted, and that seems unnecessary now, at least. I would argue probably unnecessary then, but water under the bridge. Thank you.
Thank you, Emma. And then just to clarify, in this specific request, we said the un, an unredacted map of the general areas for development. So that was what was listed, if it's one thing you can look into. Any other questions from the board? If you can't put your hand up, just speak up. Okay. Thank you very much for that, and we'll move on to the next item, which is the Review of Resolution 2023-08. Mike, would you like to speak to that?
Yeah, briefly. This is probably more of a question for planning, but one of the, one of the things that came up during the whole Holton Hills process was this, I think, confusion between the purpose and function of a neighborhood plan versus an area master plan. And in particular, I think we ended up with a situation where this neighborhood land use plan was kind of used for both. And I think the benefits, the project of both were made use of, but perhaps the other restrictions and limitations from each type of plan were kind of not so evident or not really used. So this was kind, this resolution was really a way to try and get some clarity on what the purposes of these individual plans are. And for example, if something is identified as an area master plan, then it's sort of only created by a developer for a particular project. And if there's a significant change to that project, then there is a process for revising, withdrawing, changing the master plan, which obviously did not happen in the case of the Holton Hills project. So this is an attempt to kind of get some clarity, and I would appreciate any comments from planning or anyone else in the administration as to, you know, how this could be achieved, perhaps.
Thanks, Mike. So whoever would like to speak first, please go ahead.
Sure. So this is Ryan Yell with the Planning Department. I can take the first crack at it, for sure. I'll admit, this is the first I've seen of this resolution in terms of specific questions that you may have. I know previously covered quite a few of those. The area master plans are an entitlement that exists in Chapter 9. The 2006 Crow Creek Neighborhood Land Use Plan was developed to both be a neighborhood land use plan, but also fulfill that area master plan requirement in Chapter 9. In terms of additional questions, Mike, could you repeat those? I'll do my best to answer them.
There's a very specific question which relates to what you just said. So if it's a neighborhood plan, then there isn't really a process for withdrawing neighborhood plans. They can get updated and revised, but they don't necessarily go, you know, they don't necessarily get changed, get removed. With area master plans, there is a process for withdrawing them. And there's also a process for requiring the update if a project changes scope by, I think, in terms of number of, you know, the amount of area or the number of units being developed. There's various criteria in code for how much change to a project there can be within a single master plan before it has to be revised in some way. And what seemed to happen in this project is because it, because the neighborhood land use plans spanned both the neighborhood plan and an area master plan, it wasn't subject to any of the revision requirements, which it would have been if it was just an area master plan. And that seems like a, say, a little bit of an end run maybe around the code. And it's not a situation I think is a positive situation for us as a community. So that was kind of one of the concerns that drove this resolution. Let's try not to be in that position again where something is failing two different purposes and therefore has none of the, doesn't have to meet some of the requirements and restrictions of each individual type of plan.
Okay, I could certainly speak to that, Mike, but I do see that Dave's got his hand up.
Yeah, thanks, Ryan, and thanks, Mike, for the questions and concerns. I would say that that's, you know, from a planning perspective, something that we too oftentimes have concerns about. One of the issues I think that planning can speak to with respect to the Holton Hills project is we have the Crow Creek Neighborhood Plan, which was serving as the area master plan for this particular area. And we never had an opportunity to review the Holton Hills project because we never had an application. So there would have been the opportunity if the application for Holton Hills had come in as a master plan, a master development plan, for us to review the Crow Creek Neighborhood Plan and determine whether or not the application before us actually met the requirements of that plan. So there would have been an opportunity, had planning reviewed the application, to send it back, perhaps, for an amendment if it didn't conform to that plan. We also could have recommended denial of the master development plan, the planned unit development, if it didn't comply with that, with that area of master plan. So that's a concern that we have. We unfortunately never had the opportunity to review the plan that CY Investments had for Holton Hills against the Crow Creek Neighborhood Plan, if that makes sense.
Thank you.
Thank you, David. Go ahead, Ryan.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, one thing I would just add to that, too, is just the general thought that the area master plan drives development or should guide development. The development doesn't guide the plan. It's kind of an easy way to think about that. If a development comes in that doesn't conform to any adopted area master plan or precedent plan, the Planning Department would then base our evaluation on its compliance with the adopted plan. Not forcing, you know, this notion that because a development doesn't comply with the underlying area master plan, that the area master plan has to be revised. It's the other way around. So the development plan would have to be revised to be compliant with the area master plan.
Thank you, Ryan.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the board? We have a question here in the room. Jerry?
Yeah, so I have a question because the circular movement that we're talking about between a master plan and a neighborhood plan. The community would like that the neighborhood plan not be used as a master plan again. And so while the Planning Department states that it didn't have the opportunity to even evaluate this as a master plan, it's, the Planning Department did state that it was going to use and it would be enforced as the master plan using the Crow Creek Neighborhood Plan. And at some point, we ask, how could we eliminate or get rid of that master plan? And Ryan, you stated well, just ask the Assembly to eliminate it, you know, get rid of it. So it's confusing to the community when the Planning Department tells us that they are going to use the Crow Creek Neighborhood Plan as the master plan and that it's viable to use as a master plan, and now say that they're and now say that they're never had a chance to see if it complied. So what, as a community, what we want to do is we want to make sure that this neighborhood plan is not used as a master plan again. And we'd like the planning department to tell us how we can make that happen.
Ryan, go ahead.
Sure, thank you. So the Crow Creek Neighborhood Land Use Plan is the underlying area master plan for this area. I, I think that the previous comment that Dave had made where we didn't get a chance to review the project was in reference to the fact that a Holton Hills application didn't come in, so we couldn't review the Holton Hills project against the Crow Creek Neighborhood Land Use Plan for compliance. So the, the neighborhood land use plan still serves as the underlying area master plan for that area. But I guess the, the question is, is just broadly speaking, if for any neighborhood plan that were to be proposed in Girdwood, is it the intent or sort of fusion that it would either be a neighborhood plan or an area master plan? Or that they would never be able to be joined together? Is that sort of the, the question or the sticking point that you're getting at?
Mike?
Well, I mean, my sticking point is we don't want that appropriate neighborhood plan to be used as a master plan. We want a separate master plan to be developed if there's development in the area.
I think, I think.
So how does that happen? How, you, Ryan, you seem to be the expert on this. How do we make that happen as a community?
So that's, that's a good question, and I'm glad I've got HLB staff here because the Crow Creek Neighborhood Land Use Plan, it's an adopted plan, but HLB was the original applicant. And, you know, say you're, you're a private developer and you own 100 acres in Girdwood and you want to come in and do an area master plan that gets approved. Well, that master plan is under that private developer's ownership, so they're the only ones that can withdraw it, revoke it, amend it unless they grant authorization to another party to do that. So in this case, it would be, and correct me if I'm wrong, Lance, but I believe it would be up to HLB to move forward with any amendments, revisions, or withdrawal of the Crow Creek Neighborhood Land Use Plan.
I, I don't know the answer to your question, Ryan.
Okay.
Yeah. But I mean, we will definitely take a look at, I understand the question. I think that was from, I forgot who the original comment came from. I think that was.
Jerry.
Jerry, thank you. I was gonna say Jim. But yeah, we'll take a look at that. I under, I think I understand what you're looking for, Jerry. And I, and if I understand Ryan correctly, if HLB was the original requester of the 2006 Crow Creek Neighborhood Plan, yeah, I, I will have to look into that.
Thank you. And Mike?
Yeah, but I, I think this discussion is, is very germane to the, the core problem of what we have is this plan, which is effectively treated as if it's a private plan for, for, for a large landowner. Yet it kind of has this intermediate stage status of both being that private plan, which is tied to a particular plan of work, and this kind of neighborhood plan, which is more of a community plan. And because it sits astride both of those, the normal, the normal restrictions and limitations to a, to the sort of private plan that it actually is seem to have been somewhat, you know, elided, I suppose. So we, we, we kind of bypassed that process. And that's what, that's what I'm uncomfortable about. Now, it sounds as if there may have been an opportunity later on in the process when there was a particular planning application to ask those questions again. But our general experience is by that time, the project already has legs and it's far too late to ask these fundamental questions.
Thank you, Mike. Jerry has his hand up.
I'll just, one quick question, and that is, can we go to HLB and ask HLB to rescind the Crow Creek Neighborhood Plans?
So Jerry, this is Lance. Let me look at the Crow Creek Neighborhood Plan, how it was created, how it was adopted. I don't know if we actually have the authority or the ability to do that, but let me look into it. I, it would, because I don't know if it was adopted as an element of the comprehensive plan or not. I'm just not that familiar with it.
Thank you. Anything else on this subtopic?
Yes, that we clearly haven't finished this. I think we've just opened up a lot of questions rather than answering anything. Or answering some, but not many.
Great. Thank you, everybody. Next on this item is discussing the status of sewer line to internal parcel boundary.
Yeah, this, I know there was funding that came from, I believe, federal government for extending the sewer line beyond into the HLB parcel up to the boundary of one of the replatted areas. And I just wondered if HLB could give us an update on the status of that project? Is that still going? Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. This is Lance again. We're working with Anchorage Water and Wastewater Utility to take advantage of the, the federal grant that we had applied for to actually complete the utilities up to, so it would be off-site, so up to the HLB parcels, but not in the parcel. So we're working with them to come up with an agreement to take advantage of that grant because at some point in the future, whatever types of development might be, might come of those parcels, we have the ability to take advantage of some federal dollars. HLB will be providing the match to those to get that forward. AWU is drafting an agreement that we will be working with them on. And AWU is just verifying that the federal grant dollars are still available and that we can proceed with those infrastructure improvements.
Thank you, Lance. Are there further questions on that item? Clarification from the board? Do you know, Lance, if that money has an end date?
I, it probably does. It, it probably does from a, at a federal, at a federal side, but I think it's, I think if we have activity coming here in the next year or two, I think we'll be on in good grounds. AWU is verifying not only the, the, the funding and the timing. So right now, I feel pretty confident that we'll be able to do some work before the grant expires.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
There are no further questions. We'll move on to the next item on the agenda, number two. GBSA is seeking assistance with meeting Girdwood industrial park needs, specifically access issues needed infrastructure such as power and long-term plans. Also, again, for Lance or another delegate from HLB. Do you like to speak to this or?
I'll, I'll speak to this for briefly, or actually, Kyle, do you want to start from your perspective?
Well, no, I think mine's more specific. I think you want to talk more the grander or the general sense of what you mean in park.
Right. So, so the industrial park is, you know, a critical part of our infrastructure. Economic diversification is one of the, one of the sort of, I think, goals, one of the targets we've been looking at for, for the community. And the industrial park is the, is really the only piece of land that can do a lot of, lot of that, anything even light industrial use. So there've been a very large number of concerns from people who are permitted in that area. And I think several of them are actually on the call today as well, so you might get some extra specific questions. But in broad sense, the, there's been a lot of problems about just access to the sites. There's a lot of problems around getting any infrastructure extended to the, to the permit sites. And then on top of that, I think the really big elephant in the room is, is if you have this land, but it's only under permit, it really restricts the amount of, you know, the amount of investment people feel comfortable making on the, on the land. So you know, what is the, what is the long-term plan for the industrial park? We've heard various questions or various proposals in the past. But there really needs to be a, you know, more clarification on what the actual, you know, short or medium-term goal is for the industrial park and how we get to a point where the whole thing is developed and everyone has, everyone who's applied or is currently working under permit can get to a point where they have a lease or even ownership.
All right, I will thank you for the questions, Mike and the others. I think right now, as far as the Girdwood Industrial Park, we're, we're looking at those as part of our 2023 work program to look at really the options. And there are primarily two. We can dispose of the remainder of the entire developable pieces of the, to the private sector. Or we could look at plating the rest of the industrial park and then sell the, the individual parcels or lease them for development at that time. I mean, the other thing to recognize is that I, I believe there's still an unfinished fill-in grade permit for the, for the access, and Kyle can correct me if I'm wrong. But we probably need to, you know, sort of go back and look at that permit, make sure that it gets completed before we do any work in the short term or, or any of the land use permits or the entire site. So in summary, we recognize it's a priority. I think, Mike, you characterized it appropriately. It's one of the few places in Girdwood where you have some industrial lands that provide some opportunity. And we're just trying to figure out, do we as HLB put it all out for sale and have it platted, or do we take the opportunity to plat it and then sell or lease the parcels to individuals? And then we got to figure out what we're doing with the existing fill-in grade permit, because as Kyle is probably aware, and the permittees that are on the site, you know, there are certain times of the year, it's the, the, the access that's avail, that's currently there is can be a bit challenging just due to the conditions. So those are the two things that we are looking at in, in 23 right now.
Okay, can we specifically, is there, can we set up a an actual meeting or some opportunity for the permit holders and leaseholders as well to sort of meet with you and express their concerns directly? I think that would be very helpful.
I would be welcome that, no problem.
Okay, we'll schedule that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the board or comments on this item further?
I mean, one comment I can make from staff perspective is that we are really trying to push to have power brought to the street maintenance lot this year. And one of the business items here at the end is asking GBOS funding to, for the butane company to do a design for us so that we can work with Chugash Electric to get power to that lot. We've been on a temporary school now for going, probably close to eight to 10 years. And we finally want to get that power to the lot and get our bull rail powered up and, and lights on as our road maintenance contractor is operating in the middle of winter off of temporary. And it's a very congested area, too, because of the amount of equipment we have there for street maintenance. So so we'll be working with HLB, the staff, to hopefully get that moving forward so that we can complete that by fall, if not early winter, and get that going. So we'll talk more about that here on the next agenda item.
And to some extent, it's almost, well, not accidental, but it's, you know, we're lucky in that we do have a, a lot which is right against, which is adjacent to a platted lot. So we're in a position where Chugash could or would consider extending power, but that's not an option to many of the other permit holders.
No, and, and what Mike's addressing there is since the, the track that we are committed on along with the other permittees really restricts us from putting transformers to each area. But due to the fact that we share a plated line with the AWU, Chugash is comfortable putting a transformer over in our corner there to serve this area. So now that's all been stated to me verbally. So once we get into the design phase, they, they may come up with something else, but the group of contacts I was working with at Chugash, I'd stated that they were comfortable putting that in. So so it does not address the rest of the DC's desire for power, but it does help there. So.
Thank you, Kyle, and thank you, Mike, for elaborating on those specifics. Anything else on number two from HLB or planning or anyone else? If not, we'll move to, yes, go ahead, Mike.
I suggest, I think Lance Wilber mentioned that there was some other things he wanted to discuss. I'm just wondering if it would be a good opportunity to do that now before we move on to the specific action of three and four.
That'd be a great idea. Thank you, Mike. Lance, did you hear that?
I did. Thank you, Mike, for the, for the lead in there. I just wanted to let the Girdwood Board of Supervisors know that HLB staff, we plan to release the draft 2023 Annual Work Program and the, and the draft accompanying 2024 to 2028 Five-Year Management Plan tomorrow. It'll be available online. We will make sure, I think, all of the members of the Girdwood Board of Supervisors will get a a direct email. We send it out to all of those that have interest in HLB. We had prepared an initial draft, a working draft to the commission. I believe it was in March and asked them to give us any initial thoughts, which included some of those draft policies. So I think a couple of them might have given us some questions, but we've revised it. Again, this is a public review draft. It's not final. So we'll be putting it out for a 45-day review starting tomorrow, and I, we're encouraged you to take a look at it. And if you have any particular questions to forward them, I'm sure there'll be a, a link to where we can get questions. It'll allow us to and compile those. But before the Girdwood Board, or excuse me, the Heritage Land Bank Commission, you know, they would probably adopt it sometime in their June meeting. So again, I just wanted you folks to know that it's going to be available for review tomorrow and, and make you aware of that. And we will also make sure that that land use study that we did for the assembly is also available to you as well. So, Mike, thank you for the opportunity to share that information.
Thanks very much for that update, Lance, and we look forward to those emails and the posting online for the next 44 days. Number three, GBOS topic, the review and vote on the butane company proposal for design and engineering to bring power to the Girdwoodized service area industrial lot at a cost not to exceed 7,500 from previously encumbered funds of 18,000.
So we've been working on this for several years and we did get progress with Chugash recently, and they would like a full design of what we're proposing to do. And so with their brain power, too. And, you know, at first, our needs are very basic. We need plugins for the equipment to stay warm in the winter and then a plug or be able to weld and do those type of things and then lighting. And so we've asked the butane company through, and they'll be working with one of their subcontractors to come up with the electrical design that we can present to CBA. And then hopefully that moves us forward. Just to give you, and we're asking not to exceed 7,500, just in case there's some things we don't know about in there, but we feel we could easily be within the 71, 80 to get that done. And what it would look like, what we're trying to do is map, to give you an idea here, is the road coming in here is the, what they call Bedrock Lane coming in. We're looking to bring power to the corner. If you're looking at this map, area in green up here is all the AWU land. So we would put a transformer right there, and then we would bring power to our existing bull rail there and then include lights. So so we're asking for the GBOS to approve the funding so we can get that done, and then we'll move to.
Thank you, Kyle. Any questions or comments from the board?
They move that we approve the spend of up to, not to exceed, sorry, $7,500 for the butane company to do the design and engineering for the power extension.
There's a motion on the floor to approve the not to exceed 7,500. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Thanks, Guy, Jennifer, for their discussion. Any discussion? We've been anxiously awaiting this for a long time, so don't see any, any hands and hearing none. Could you do a roll call, Kyle?
Sure. Brianna Sullivan?
Yes.
Mike Edgington?
Yes.
Guy Wade?
Yes.
Jennifer Wingard?
So muted.
Yes.
Amanda Sassy? Amanda? Amanda? I can't, I can see your mic coming off, but we can't hear you. There you are, go ahead.
Yes, 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 thank you.
Thank you, Kyle, for all of your work on that and Bute Company. We're now to our bump down item to number four, and if anyone needs to leave before the 5 P M timeline, that's, we understand. So this is the introduction of formation of the Housing and Economic Stability Committee of G B O S, which was our Proposition 7, and we had this, started this discussion also last meeting, but we wanted to have the opportunity to finalize it before it's posted in a day and a half, basically.
Yeah, I'll speak to this briefly, I think the, the, there's probably some confusion here based on the last meeting, I think my, what my proposal was, wasn't a a standing committee for the Housing and Economic Stability Advisory Committee, it was a, an ad hoc committee for one year to look at the short-term issues we had for housing. And I think what's in the draft document here is, is the assignment of the standing committee. So what I wanted to do was just get clarity from the board about whether we were, if, if what I proposed isn't quite what the board thought they agreed to, then we should just, we should just clarify what we have in front of us. So is this a, my proposal originally was for a one-year ad hoc committee. Is that what we actually want as a board, or do we want to set up the, the standard committee?
Thank you, Mike. Any comments or questions from the board to clarify this from the other day? You don't have to put your hands up. Go ahead, Jennifer.
Yeah, I think I can see that, I could agree with Mike on some of the confusion. I, just to, to clarify what I thought was happening is that it was a one-year committee, kind of with the option to extend, though it wasn't going to have a necessary deadline and dissolution, but we were asking for one-year commitments. So maybe, maybe this is a discussion we need to have about whether or not this is a standing committee or it automatically dissolves at the end of the year. If I'm understanding correctly, that that's the question.
Yeah, that, that's basically the question, yeah. It sounds like we have similar but not quite identical opinions on this.
Amanda?
I was wondering, for the ad hoc, if we went that route?
Could you repeat that real quick?
I was just wondering what would happen after the year of being ad hoc, if we went that route?
Typically, what would happen in that dot committee is we give it a, we give it a scope and it continues until we either dissolve it or it completes that scope, and then we would dissolve it, so. And then we, you know, at, at the end of that, we would probably put in place the, the standing committee, that's why I was, that's what I was trying to describe last time, the last meeting. So it's not like it stops on one year. Whether they're finished or not, it would, it would continue going until they complete the scope of the first tasks. And it's probably, it's probably just a, you know, a bureaucratic nicety about whether we, you know, how we, what we actually call it, and whether we set it up as one or the other, I just think we should be clear now.
Thank you, Mike, Guy. You're still muted, Guy.
Yep, sorry about that, yeah, I was kind of under the impression that it would be one-year terms, but then be a committee similar to the Cemetery Committee or something, or the Public Safety Action Committee that would continue on after that. If re-elected or if choose to, that kind of thing.
Thank you, Guy. And then just to add on, I would say that my impression reading this draft and the other was that it's okay if this scope is one year and focused on housing, but ultimately it could morph into having the Housing and Economic Power that will be asserted tomorrow at the assembly meeting as the new power, so. Hope that that clarifies what we all think we have here so that it can be posted this week. What do you think, Mike?
And what I'm going to do then is, I'm gonna, for, for the sake of getting a clear decision, I'm going to propose that we set this up as an ad hoc committee with a one-year, maybe 18 months, but with an initially a year, maybe a year, a year a bit scope of the two tasks we've already identified. And then we would take a separate action to actually set up the standing committee, so this would, so if we could just have a decision about whether to set this up as an ad hoc committee or not, first of all. So that's what I'm proposing, this is an ad hoc committee.
Amanda, and then Guy.
I think that this is something we're going to need, and it's going to take a while, so I think we should just set up the standing committee.
Thank you. Guy?
Yeah. So Mike, are you thinking ad hoc committee and the standing committee, or just after the year we'll establish the standing committee from there?
Ad hoc for now, and then towards the end of this, or at the end of this, we'd set up a standing committee, but I'm not saying if we choose the other thing, I just want to clear, I think we just need to be clear on our decision, so. Nobody wants to second it, then it dies. If somebody does want to second it, maybe we should vote it down.
Okay, does anyone want to second the motion? Okay, I don't hear anything, so the motion dies, and we need to move on, I have two questions before we talk to our timeline, so.
Can I just move that we clarify that we are setting up a standing committee, but with a, with some limited scope of their first tasks?
Perfect. We have a motion on the floor to set up a, what was the word you said?
It's a standing.
Standing committee with a limited scope at the beginning.
I'll second, this is Amanda.
Thanks, Amanda. Any further discussion? Jerry?
So you are proposing the scope, and if I'm reading the scope here, the scope is specifically tied to creating housing. There are other methods that might benefit more housing here, like zoning, would that be included in this? And specifically, I'm thinking of short-term rental restrictions, you know, tax relief, things like that.
That did come up, Jerry, and we didn't want to give the, the committee ideas before they were given a task. If that makes sense, though those were all great ideas, but then we felt like that was too much.
It could be part of.
I, I believe so.
Yeah, that's why I was thinking of two different things, but this is, this is my.
That's hopefully answered. Jennifer, and then Guy, thanks, Jerry.
Thank you, Brianna. I have a question about the wording of this and just, believe it or not, it still seems vague, the idea of limited scope at first. Like, are we going to put a timeline on, you can't talk about anything else until, you know, next date, or I'm just a little confused on that.
Okay. What do you think?
I think, yeah, I mean, I, I think maybe this is, this is a bigger discussion. Maybe we're not ready to have that discussion now, I think the, the confusion I had of whether it's ad hoc or standing, we, if we can vote on this, I think we can clear that up at least. And then maybe we have to have another specific discussion about issues of scope, because I'm not quite sure I understand questions coming up, and I'm beginning to think of more.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Guy?
Yeah, no, mine was about the scope too, just, you know, limiting, I mean, I, I see giving them a good starting point, but just limiting it to, I think the committee will come up with good ideas as well, so I don't want to limit their imagination.
I see. Well, we have a second on the floor for the previous motion. And we have our discussion, could we have that repeated, or shall we, are you wanting to withdraw?
No, I, uh, let's stay with it, do you, do you remember why I said?
Oh, I do.
Exactly.
That of the standing committee with the limited scope.
Limited scope.
Okay, I call, ask for a roll call vote, please.
Brianna Sullivan?
Yes.
Mike Edgington?
Yes.
Guy Wade?
Yes.
Jennifer Wingard?
No.
Amanda Sassy?
Yes.
Motion passes forward.
Thank you, everyone, and we'll have to clarify that too. Okay, quickly, before we go to public comment, I have a question for Kent. If you're still, yes, you're still there, I believe. For the suspension bridge, it's on the agenda for tomorrow night at the assembly meeting, I was wondering what the status is for the funding for the design.
Uh, excuse me, if it's on the assembly agenda for approval, with the funding is in hand, because we're, we're required to certify the funds before it goes before the assembly, so the funding is there.
Okay, thank you, Kent, and then I have one for H L B. The commission members that are potentially not in a quorum, will there be a May meeting? Because the April meeting was canceled?
Yeah, this is Lance, that's our plan, to have a May meeting, yes.
We'll look forward to an update for that meeting and agenda, and I don't think I have any more questions unless anyone else does, staff. Okay, I'll go to a public comment. Persons offering public comment must state their full name and address. Public comment is limited to three minutes per person and must be on subjects not listed on the agenda. Please raise your hand if you have public comment. Okay, hearing and seeing none, I'd like to thank everyone for making the time to have our quarterly meeting finally, and being here today and ask for a motion to adjourn.
To adjourn.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Jennifer. Thanks, everyone.
Thanks, everyone.